We have the superintendent's report. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Ms. Watts. Thank you, board members. Thank you again to our students, teachers, staff, parents, and principals for really doing what they did to recognize and thank our board members. Next item we have, excuse me, it's District Highlights, and I would like to start by first, I don't know if you know, but we have our cross-country team from Donna North High School who actually made it to state. And so we have with us today Mr. V., our principal at Donna North, and also the coaches as well as the students. And I would like to take the opportunity to really acknowledge their effort and thank them for really representing our district really well. So I want to welcome Mr. V. here with us.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. There was the board. One good thing about being a principal at Donna North High School is that at some point, okay, you all know the truth, all the time, I am a cheerleader at Donna North High School. And I'm always, you know, I'm looking for opportunities to just get all, I was telling somebody, "Oh, wat toso." Because I go out there and, you know, we make it known that we are there to beat our opponent, you know, when we're out there. And I had a great opportunity to follow the path of our cross-country team, our boys. And we went all the way, where is it, Round Rock, Texas? Round Rock, Texas, for the state competition. And let me tell you, I know we didn't win the competition, but man, we had a lot of support out there. We had our flags, our cheerleaders, and we just had everybody. So it was just an honor, and it was just fun to go out there and support our team and did a phenomenal job against those, man, nationally-ranked runners. So I want to introduce our athletic coordinator, Jose Marichilar, and the head coach for the cross-country team, Basilio Mendoza.
Thank you very much. We're honored to be honored. I'm at the rule of eighty already. So the magic number is eighty. I'm at eighty-two. I'll be eighty-three by June. So it's been a great journey. You know, this year was super special for me. It's my last, my last cross-country season. This is my ninth year here. You guys brought me here nine years ago. Actually, I was doing pretty fine at where I was at. I was only, I think I was only a mile and a half away from my house at Palmview High School, and we had just gone to state there. And one of our guys got top ten, and one of our other guys won a state title in a shop hood. And we're doing fine until they came looking for me, and I'm like, "No." And I said, "Well, you know, make it attractive." They did. I'm like, "Okay, I'm going." So nine years here and nine years at state. So we're not, I came here nine, the coach asked me, "Can you win a district title?" And I'm like, "Oh, I don't want to win," you know, that's kind of low, a low bar. So I say, "I'm here to try to win a state title." And three years ago, we almost did it. We got second. So we missed it by a little bit. So this young man I have this year, they're real young. They're real young, and, you know, sometimes you have to be kind of hardcore with them, and you've got to be coach, and dad, and friend, and therapist, and psychologist, and everything else, trainer. So just to give you an idea what we had to go through to get to where we went, statistically speaking, it's a .001 percent to make it there, because you have over four hundred teams or so, you know, to make it there. So we had to eliminate all the Valley teams. So every single school you drive across from Port Isabel all the way to Roma, Donna eliminated every single one. And then, and, thank you. And then all the Corpus teams, every team in Corpus Christi was also eliminated by us. Every team in San Antonio, with the exception of two or three, three, they were eliminated. All the Laredo teams, we had to eliminate them. Anybody far west, which is Del Rio, which is always a parlor and everything, and Eagle Pass, my good friend Eagle Pass, we had to eliminate him too. I say, "Sorry, Coach." So I think the special, special thing about that was that this year, we went to a tie at district, which is, that's kind of like never happens. And we ended up winning with our sixth man, and he was a real young kid, and he did awesome. And so it was great, and I already knew that, I mean, being there, I already knew we had our hands full, because we had to go against about five nationally-ranked teams, and then individually, top three in the nation guys. So it's like, oh, you're like, so when they got in the line, I looked at my kids, and they're like, "Oh, my God, puppies." And you got wolves next to them. I'm like, "Oh, no." And I'm like, "Don't worry about it." Like, what do you tell them? So I think, I think they did an awesome job. And again, I think I told Mr. Principalities that I'm gonna, that, that was my last cross-country season. And I, my wife looks at me, she goes, "Are you sure you're gonna retire?" And I'm like, "Yeah." We kind of, we, we didn't run that great, which I'm not used to seeing, you know, watching. But not because we couldn't, but I think they were just struck with the pressure, you know, there's thirty thousand people watching. So they were a little, you know, and I tell them, "Don't worry about it." So they're all coming back for another three years, which is great, you know. So I'd like to start off with our captain. This young man has been at state three years. At one point, he was ranked third in the nation. And, you know, he's got some, you know, a lot of problems with his hips, so he couldn't do what he really wanted to do. But he also holds a state medal second place. And that's Jesus Mora. And our other kid, other runner that couldn't be here, I think, I think he might be the first DISD kid that makes the state four years in a row. So he's got a state since he was a freshman, sophomore, junior, and senior year, which is unheard of. Most freshmen will be eightieth place. This kid was in the top ten for four years, so which is, was amazing. That's Jorge Ponce, but he couldn't be here. Our third man, also there, most of our kids are really, really shy. They're not shy when they're alone, but they're really shy around people. And our third man, Oscar Salas, also couldn't, couldn't be here. Great kid, he's a junior, so he's coming back. Only two guys from the ten are not coming back. The rest of them are coming back. So he couldn't be here. So Oscar Salas, and our next, our next man is a freshman. He did a great job, I mean, at sixteen thirty for a freshman is remarkable. So I'm really happy. Mark Corpus, that's our assistant coach's son. And then, and then we have our next kid. He, he was really determined to be on the varsity team, and I kind of didn't see it as a freshman. I said, "Mijo, you're gonna have to do a lot of work." And I mean, a lot. And he said, "I wanted to do it." He did it. He did a lot of things on his own. He's self-driven. I see this man at the next level, just like, Jesus Mora has got about five offers right now, so we got to decide which one we go with. And Jesus Torres. Jose, I'm sorry, Jose, Jesus. Jose, I'm sorry about Jose. So Jose here looks like a very different, his name is Curly. We nicknamed him Curly. Yeah, Curly, maybe I exaggerated, but I'm not sure. But I think, I always say, I always tell people, he lost thirty pounds, thirty, forty pounds. Hard worker. And then we have a pair of twins, and, well, one of them didn't make the varsity, but the other one did, Daniel Parra. Gabriel Parra, I'm sorry, Gabriel? There you go, Gabriel. Do you want to shake hands? Gabriel, we're barely scraping down. See, this guy's, if he wants to, can be a top-ten contender in the state of Texas, six-eight. And then our other, though, may, one of the guys that, the one that broke the tie at a district, I think we were the only district team that got a tie in the whole state of Texas. And so we, so this kid, we call, we have nicknames for everybody. So his name's Jesus, Jesus Vinegas, Jesus Vinegas. We call him Radio. Jesus. He broke the tie, so he actually made the monitor and a whole bit. And so basically, it was like a sixty-yard field goal and barely went in, you know, so that's what he did. And then our last one, another freshman, also came in a little late in the summer, but he made the varsity traveling squad, is Benji Rubio. He's real quiet. We've had a lot of those. And then I'd like to also introduce my assistant coach, who's, you know, sometimes to get to a state championship, there's a lot of things you've got to do, like, you talk about sacrifice, and a lot, a lot of sacrifice. I couldn't even start. But I think Coach Corpus has, has done a lot, a lot of things that, that most normal coaches have never done, you know. So I've been coaching twenty years, not that long, but twenty years, and in twenty years, there's only been, been one guy that can stay up with me. And, because I'm always, I mean, I don't sleep, you know, I'm always thinking about winning. And so Coach Corpus is, I think he's ready to be the new head coach. Coach Corpus? It's been a pleasure working with Coach Corpus. So we've been taking all these kids all over the country. I'm sure you might have heard, maybe. But we've gone all over the country. So thank you very much for everything you've done for us.
You want to say it? You want to say it? Whatever you all want. So if you want to say it, I'll hear you. I want to hear it. You want to say it in the back?
That way we're...
That we're taller than you.
Don't put anybody in trouble.
Yeah. He can tell.
I'm gonna squeeze your hand, David.
Great job.
Great job, guys. Proud of you.
Thank you.
We are very proud of our cross-country team, Donna North, cross-country team, the boys, and the coaches, and the leadership, and everybody at Donna North is doing a great job to support the team and make us all proud. Next, as part of the district highlights, as you heard one of our students earlier in the video saying about early college high school, opening up next school year, we would like, we wanted to give you, to our board members, our community, an update where we stand. So with me here, you probably know by now, Ms. Madrano, our new principal at Early College High School.
Hello.
We're very proud of her, and she's been really working hard since we actually hired her, right, as a new principal for our early college high school. So we're gonna just go through a few slides, and I don't know, Madrano, you can, we can do it together.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead. You want to start? Yeah. So just to introduce, and I'm a little sick, so just bear with me if I start coughing. But just basic questions, you know, what is an early college high school? So it is an innovative program that allows students to begin taking college courses as early as ninth grade. So as long as they're college-ready, and by college-ready, we mean that they've passed the TSI in both reading and math, then they can get a jumpstart into taking college courses as early as ninth grade. And so Early College will also give students an opportunity to earn an associate's degree with our partner, our STC, South Texas College. And this program will also offer students an opportunity to be engaged in a very small learning environment. We will be recruiting up to one hundred and twenty-five students, so that really allows for that small personalized learning environment. One of the biggest benefits also with the Early College program is that students not only have and benefit from the resources that Donna ISD offers, but also those resources like the library, the labs, the tutorial services from our partner, our STC partner. And so there's a misconception with the target population. A lot of people believe that, that an early college is just geared for your straight-A students, for your top students. And actually, it's not. We have to really target our first-generation collegegoers, our at-risk, and sub-populations of our at-risk students, like our English-language learners, our special ed population, and really just look at reducing barriers for our first-generation collegegoers and give them this platform to thrive in and really get that jumpstart. So as I mentioned earlier, we will be looking at recruiting up to one hundred and twenty-five students. If there are more than one hundred and twenty-five students who apply, because we will have an application process, if there are more than one hundred and twenty-five students who apply, then we will go into a weighted lottery system.
Just want to add, I know there are a lot of questions, and for example, one of the, like, top five or three questions is, "How about athletics and how about fine arts?" And so we, the idea is to allow our students to participate in UIL activities such as athletics or fine arts. However, they'll have to do that at their zone campuses. So in other words, if the student is zoned to Donna High, they will, they will have the opportunity to join our athletic programs at Donna High, or, you know, if they want to play band, they can also go and play band with our Donna High students there. So, but they'll have to follow the same process, you know, whatever it is for them to get accepted into the program. But they, they'll have the same opportunities at our zone campuses.
Will transportation be provided?
No, at this point, no. We, at this point, our parents will be responsible for transportation and to, I mean, no, sorry, no, we'll bring them to Donna High, I'm sorry. After school, if they participate, they will have to provide the transportation, the parents.
Unless, Dr. Valdez, you mean transportation to the college?
Well, like, for example, band usually practices in the morning, so how will they get a...
So if students are practicing per se, let's say that band, like you said, starts practicing at seven o'clock in the morning, but they need to be at the early college by eight-twenty, then transportation would be provided to the campus?
We can all, you have, you want to say something?
So with early college, especially the ones that are not located within the school, any extracurricular activities that happen within the school day, students at the early college will not be allowed to utilize those classes during the school day. They will have before and after school, because the schedule with STC varies. So that's going to be working in conjunction with both high schools to see how that works. But they will be allowed, say, there's band practice in the morning, they'll be allowed to have band practice, but I know it rolls into first period usually. They will have to be transported back to the early college site or STC site.
There's, I mean, given, given the challenges that we have right now within our own district right now, people are zoned within the schools without the college, the training and development for UIL students that want to participate, whether it's extracurricular activity, whether it's football, band, fine arts, whatever that is, it still requires time. It's kind of time-consuming for the student and the parent. And that's one challenge I think we're gonna face here in the next, the next year, simply because we don't have enough training time or development time for those students to do those extracurricular activities, what they want to do. And so the reason I say that is, sometimes the community as a whole don't understand that process. And the community thinks that, you know, the coaching is not well-done, or development of fine arts students not being well-done because we're not doing the job correctly. Well, it might not be that. It might be that, you know, the student chooses education, training versus, versus the extracurricular activity. So those are choices I think sometimes we have to develop. And so parents need to make sure they are aware of this process. And I don't think we're doing a very good job in doing that. And that's us, including here on the board. So you've got to make sure we are able to give those kind of community responses, because with that comes, obviously, phone calls.
Yeah. No, that's a good point. Typically, typically, whenever we have, a school district have, they have standalone early college high schools. They usually do, districts do not provide transportation for the athletics, the athletics program. Not all of them, but I said, a big number. But however, that's something we'll assess and see. I don't even know how many, how many students will be part of our, part of our early college high school, and also be playing, let's say, on the football team or being band. I think that's something we will assess. I mean, we're here to work with our students and our community. But at this point, we're not planning, yes, we're not, we're not planning, we're not planning on providing transportation. We'll provide transportation to STC. I'm back from STC. We will, we will make sure that when it comes to the early college, yes, anything that they need based on that will be provided to them. So we'll be providing that. And I think also, and I know, you know, Ms. Madrano kind of talked a little bit about it, and that's something I've been, I've been talking to our parents and our, and our staff about it, is the early college high school, it's not only going to provide, like, for our parents and our students an opportunity to get, to not, to have two years of college without paying for that, which is, it is, pretty much getting an associate's degree. That's the goal, we have to get an associate's degree and not pay for those two years of college, which is a great already advantage, right? However, also the other plus, what people sometimes don't think about it, if I'm, if I'm an I-18, graduating from a Donna High School, Donna Early College High School, right, with an associate's degree, if I go to, let's say, U2RGV, I only need two more, two more years of college, right? So at twenty, technically, I can finish with my bachelor's, and I can start my career at twenty, whereas most other students will start at twenty-two. So I'm giving, I'm gonna be getting two years a head start compared, let's say, to my colleague who are graduating at twenty-two. So two years of work. And so let's say, I get, I get a bachelor's, and I'm starting, my starting salary is around fifty thousand, that's fifty times two, that's a hundred thousand dollars that our students can have a head start compared, again, to the majority of our, the rest of the students who will graduate with a bachelor's at twenty-two. So it's really, that's why this is a really great opportunity for our students and our community, because it's not just saving them two years' worth of college, but also giving them two years to be ahead of their peers and starting their career at a really early age. So it's, that's why we're very excited about it. So...
I've got one question. I kind of went through your little PowerPoint already, or making a head, but I guess maybe this is more for the CFO and for you, Dr. Z. Mike, when can she expect to have a budget? Because she has to plan for next year, so she's gonna have to order furniture, supplies, materials, resources, software, textbooks.
Yeah.
And then how is personnel going to be decided as far as how is that, who's gonna go, or is there gonna be a process on who's gonna be able to apply? Do you have to change staffing also?
Yeah. I mean, the, so the, you're kind of head, you're GT student, right? You're head, Dr. Valdez. But that's actually, that's what the plan, and we want to share with you this. But you also have a meeting, we're gonna be, we already talked about some of that furniture and stuff like that, and technology needs. So we're already in the planning already on that. And we're gonna have a, continue, we're gonna, the plan is to have a weekly meeting from now until the lunch, and with the, with the people who are, like you said, like Ms. Cancino, you know, Ms. Madrano, the people who are involved, Mr. Rana, curriculum, HR, you know, building. So we're gonna be meeting to kind of like really make sure that we have, everything is ready to launch our early college high school and really launch it in, you know what I mean, like positively and successfully, right?
Because it's a lot of work.
Yes, ma'am, yes. So...
But if you don't start, like, now, you're gonna...
Yes. It is. And we do have, and I know Ms. Madrano will tell you, because we have a coach, or, what do you call it, somebody from...
So we have, are also partnered, or through the early college, we're also partnered up with Educate Texas, and her name is Alma Garcia. So she's also been scheduling monthly meetings. My next meeting is the last week of January. And so she herself has been providing a lot of coaching in regards to the blueprint design and to make sure that we, as a district, are meeting every item in the checklist.
And like, Ms. Madrano, have you looked at, like, or have you presented to them, for example, like, what kind of staffing you're gonna need? What are you gonna need a dean, you're gonna need an assistant, or that kind of staffing, has that been determined?
We, we talked, are you talking about next year or this year?
For next year.
Yeah, we talked...
All that has to be done, like...
We talked, and we are working on it, Dr. Valdez. And, and we discussed, like, what she needs, and we will be, obviously, all those positions will be eventually posted early spring for people to apply, and obviously, we'll be open for anybody to apply, right? Current, our district, but also anybody who wishes to apply. So yes, we'll have all that ready to go.
So what we've created, Ms. Madrano, and I, is a working calendar with a backwards design. So starting in, in June, because that's really when we're gonna start seeing kids for the summer bridge program, and working backwards to see where they need the assistance. But staffing, budget is number-one priority. Curriculum is pretty much set.
Okay, let me go back. So you're gonna start doing that in June?
No, no, that's the backwards design. So we started with a backwards design, because we're gonna start seeing kids in June.
But let's, I'm sorry, Doc. So these are some of the pathways, obviously, these pathways will be looked at in collaboration with STC. And also, you know, nothing is set in stone, because if there is something else that is a great opportunity for our students, obviously, we'll make it happen. If we need to adjust, again, this is what we proposed, and that's what was shared with STC. These are the four Associate of Arts, and Criminal Justice, Teaching, Mathematics, and then Intensive Studies. So that's the four that we talked about. This is, you want to keep going about how does early college work? So give an example of...
Yeah. So as I mentioned earlier, in order for freshmen or any student to start taking college courses, they need to have passed their TSI in both reading and math. And so one of the things at early college, or one of the items, a mandatory item in the blueprint, is having that summer bridge that Dr. Sevus just mentioned a little while ago. And so during that summer bridge, we'll do a lot of college readiness activities, including a tutorial camp for both TSI reading and TSI math, so that students can participate in activities and engage in learning, and then at the end of the week, be able to take the test, and the results are immediate. And so no college courses would be available to freshmen in the fall, but beginning of the spring, they will be able to start taking those college courses. So if you see in this visual that we have here, freshmen can take up to two college classes in the spring. And thereafter, every summer, they can take up to two during Summer Session One and Summer Session Two. And they'll be able to just climb up and start accumulating those college credits. They'll be able to take two college classes each semester, sophomore, sophomore year, and then junior and senior year. We have a typo here. They'll be able to take up to four college classes in the fall and four college classes in the spring, for a total of sixty, up to sixty college credit hours. So as I mentioned earlier, again, the, not necessarily it's just your top A students or your highest-ranking eighth graders who can apply. This is, again, we will be looking at recruitment very specifically for that target population. And so really, the kids who we want to apply are those kids who are willing to make that commitment. Kids who are willing to commit to the demands, as Colonel Beddoes said earlier, you know, some, they may have to not, they may have to decide, do they want to be the star quarterback, or do they want to get this, benefit from this great opportunity? So any student who's motivated, determined, hard-working, and just at the end, really wanting to commit to the demands of this program are the kind of students that we'll be targeting.
So this is, this is some of the important dates, I think, we mentioned earlier. So this is, this is, again, not everything is in here, but this is an example of what, or some of the activities, I guess, there would be, that we have to be conducting to make sure that we have a successful launch of our early college high school.
And so our commitment in early college high school is not only to get our students graduated with their twenty-six college credits and their endorsement, but all... four college classes in the spring for a total of 60, up to 60 college credit hours. So as I mentioned earlier, again, the, not necessarily it's just your top A students or your highest ranking eighth graders who can apply. This is, again, we will be looking at recruitment very specifically for that target population and so really the kids who we want to apply are those kids who are willing to make that commitment. Kids who are, are willing to commit to the demands, as Colonel Beddoes said earlier, you know, some, they may have to not, they may have to decide, do they wanna be the star quarterback or do they wanna get this benefit from this great opportunity? So any student who's motivated, determined, hardworking and just at the end really wanting to commit to the demands of this program are the, the kind of students that we'll be targeting.
So this is, this is some of the important days, I think, we mentioned earlier. So this is, this is again, not everything is in here, but this is an example of what, or some of the activities, I guess, there would be, that we have to be conducting to make sure that we have a successful launch of our early college high school. Okay.
And so our commitment in, in early college high school is not only to get our students graduated with their 26 college credits and their endorsement, but all, their 26 high school credits, but also get them, hopefully, get them up to an associate's degree by the time that they're out of, of, of high school, really saving them and their parents a lot of time, a lot of money and hopefully getting them, looking forward to getting that bachelor's degree at, in two more, in two additional years. And so our commitment really directly aligns to our, our goal, our goal three, which is to get our kids T S I ready and getting those associate's degrees by the end of high school graduation.
Is it going to be a gap, I mean, a cap on the number of students that are able to enter?
Yes, so Benchmark One states that we can't, because we wanna keep that small learning environment and that smaller student to teacher ratio than the max amount of students who can be recruited is 125, maximum every year and then we can scale up, yeah.
And Dr. Aziz, do you know by when, by what date you'll be able to give us a final destination?
Yeah, I think, we, I had a conversation with Ms. Swartz about it and we, we're ready to share that information with our board members first before we can go out to our community, but we're prepared to share some, some, you know, the plan pretty much.
Do you know by, by January or?
No, January, yeah, we have to, because if you notice, we have to go out in February and start having fair meetings, so we have to, and also the application has to have the location, everything will be ready with the flyers, we'll be going, you know, Ms. Madrano, we'll be leading this work and she'll be going to the eighth, to the middle schools also recruiting and having meeting with parents. So it's, we want this again to be very successful and because it's really a great opportunity for our district and for our community and we wanna make sure again that, that this, this thing shines, right? And, and happens. And it's one, I forget what I was, add something else I want to say, but, but, you know, Ms. Madrano and Dr. Seves and, you know, really, even, you know, everybody has been very involved and again, I know we're gonna finalize everything this month and then, but we've been working already. I want you to know, we've been working, we've been talking, we've been discussing, we've been looking at, you know, possible cost estimates and things like that, right, to get this thing going. But I, I believe that we have the, the right principle.
Absolutely.
And I believe that, you know, she's gonna be able to make it happen. We started small with 100, 125 students and by the way, our parents, more students can apply and we wanna be fair, so it won't be, would be a lottery, usually the lottery is done in public if there's more than 125, to make sure that it's done, transparency, parents will be invited to this lottery. Again, I don't know how many we will have, but let's say we end up with 200 applicants, when we come up with the lottery, the lottery will be in public, like we, we, parents will be able to be part of it, so for the sake of transparency and it's not because so-and-so gets it or gets in, it's really open for everybody and anybody.
And I guess maybe just the most important thing that I know is critical, Mrs. Cancino, just work with her, defend that budget, the sooner she gets it, the sooner she can take care of it.
We already initiating, we already have a campus.
Number, campus.
So we're already initiating, setting up accounts in S and M.
Yes, we already got that.
We are in the reporting.
Yeah. We'll be truly in collaboration already with everybody.
Right.
Yep. You got it, but thank you, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next we have our January, January Lone Star Governance monitoring report. By the way, the Lone Star, what we did, talked about earlier is part of our goal three, so that can, we can get earned minutes for that, right, Mr. Perez?
That's right.
Anyway, so the next one is the board and you should have a copy of it, huh? The folder?
Yellow folder.
Yellow folder, in the yellow folder, thank you. And I know there were some questions, so, that were asked, so we have some answers, but feel free to ask me anymore. Me and Mr. Rana will, will, will try to answer this question and we have our directors with us, thank you for staying. Excuse me, so Goal One is, we're looking at the percentage of kindergarten through grade two students reading on or above grade level, we want that to increase from a 64 to 90 by year 2023. By the way, I, I know Dr. McMahon is, is still on Zoom, right? I know that we did that workshop back in late October and we talked about the possibility of tweaking some of these goals to make sure that a lot on House Bill Three, so we're working on that as well. So we'd be ready to share that with you very soon, I think she's coming toward the end of the month, I think, January 20th, 21st and then we're gonna meet with her, talk about it, look at the numbers, look what we're gonna come up with and then share with our board members and then get your opinion, your input, your feedback before we can tweak it. But for now, we have to follow what we have as far as I E local. So, so we want our, we want our percentage of kindergarten students reading to go from 72 to 90 by year 2023. We want also our percentage of first grade students reading on or above grade level to go from a 55 to 90 and we want the percentage of second grade students reading on or above grade level to increase from 65 to 90 percent. Let's look at as, as a, as a whole, as a goal, you can see that this November, we had a 52 percent, it's pretty much B O Y, pretty much the beginning of a year kinda assessment, I station assessment. January, it's really was, the data was pulled from the December assessment, cause we just started the month of January, so it's really, I guess I would consider that like a middle of a year kinda assessment. So we want it from a 52 percent to a 58 percent with the goal is to be at 75 percent, so that's pretty much the overall goal. Last year, we ended the year, 65 percent of our kinder through grade, of second grade, I'm sorry, reading on or above grade level was a 65 percent. Let's look at kindergarten and kindergarten students reading on or above grade level and this is like really the pre-K four guys, this is really, what's exciting about this, this is kinda like, we start seeing the fruit of that pre-K four program. You see that in the beginning of the year, only 53 percent of them were reading on grade level and now there's a huge jump to 63 percent and I, I honestly, I know besides the hard work of our teachers and staff and our C N I and everybody, right, that working really hard, I think really, it's really the program also that's really helping. We know that as you go from, you know, like May to, to August, that, that summer break, the holidays are dropped, so we started again low, but look, he was a huge double digit increase in, within like three months. So I think that we are really on track, really like, hopefully hit 80 percent or we'll come really, really close. As far as first grades, reading, reading on or above grade level, unfortunately, there was some growth, but it's not as, as high as we wanted, so we went from a 47 to 52 percent. Now, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna make sure we remind our board members that I station does not give the same assessment in the beginning of the year and the middle of the year. It's a different assessment. So if you started on a grade level or above grade level in September, right, you know, you, you, you have to at least maintain, right? Because now we're teaching them a new curriculum, I station is teaching them at, at the higher level. So even the fact that get 47 percent, that means we maintaining the same percent, the same percentage of students who are started already on or above grade level. If this number goes up, that means we are actually helping more, bringing more students to be on or grade, on or above grade level despite the fact that the, the test itself is harder now because they already have three months worth of, worth of material, I guess, to cover. So again, we have a lot of work to do, but we always, it's always positive to see more and more of our students are reading on or above grade level. For second grade, we have, we started at 56 percent of our students reading on or above grade level, that number went to 60 percent. Last year, we ended the year at 64 percent, but again, we, it's a different test when we were hoping that that number will increase and we wanna really that number to be close to 75 percent, that's really the, the goal for, for this second grade. We feel like we are approaching, although we still have some more, more work to do in second grade and first grade, we wanna always celebrate and recognize the campuses that are doing a great job, you know, teaching our students, make sure our students are reading on or above grade level, wanna continue monitoring, reading on or, on grade level or above grade level. We also wanna make sure providing coaching, our strategists, our coaches, we wanna make sure they continue, our teachers, our principals and, and C Ss are there trying to help directors, everybody's working hard to make sure that we're providing everything our teachers need to continue that. We wanna make sure also that we're providing more support to our immersion, our development reader, guiding, reading protocol and steps and checklists. These, a lot, some of this stuff is, are new and so we wanna make sure that we continue supporting and helping that. That's the evidence, what we pull is really mainly I station data. Next, I wanna talk about the superintendent shall not hire any new campus principal with fewer than three years of demonstrated successful experience in campus district leadership role and we, we did, we, we did hire two, two principals, I guess, two principals since, no, one, one principal or two principals since last time we met, maybe a couple of months ago and that's, we hired Ms. Madrano, obviously has our new early college high school and she has more than three years experience and also we hired our new principal at So Seta and she also, that's, that does have more years and, more than three years worth experience, so in that case, that's why we say we're meeting, cause we don't hire any principal who, who doesn't, or doesn't have the three years or more years as an assistant principal, dean or assistant principal, I guess. I know there were some question again, Dr. Valdez, I know that we get you some answers and in the folder, you put them in there, right, sir? Okay. I don't know if you have any other question for me, Mr. Rana, or our directors and strategists?
Just, to me mainly it's just a comment.
Yes.
I don't look at personnel, I look at numbers.
Yeah.
And to me, the numbers, oh, and also I do wanna let you know that I've asked multiple times to make sure that I provided last year's scores so that I can compare, I think this is the third time I've asked for that, I haven't gotten it, so I had to go back to last year's to retrieve it to compare it to the issue, cause I've asked for it three times, I still don't get it, but.
Yes, so I can attach both last year, last year presentation and this year presentation together.
Just that, just that page so that I can kinda compare.
Yeah, the format, the format, the, the net board format, then we need to add the slide there, so I can have a separate slides.
No, actually just include the report from last year, cause that's what I did, I went to that work and I just pulled it out.
Yeah, I, I tried to insert the net board, then it, it saw the whole format, so I didn't.
We have, we'll have to, we'll have to do another slide for each one of the G P Ms.
No, and you don't have to do that, just give me last year's and, and what I did, what I did when I compared that, this is why I'm concerned, because I listened to everything Dr. Aziz said and of course, all that makes perfect sense, but that same thing was the same thing for last year. What I'm trying to say is when I looked at the data from last year versus this year, the data is telling us that last year we were at a minus five percent to our target 2023, I can see from here. And currently, right now, based on where we are right now, we are projected at the end of the year to not to be at a negative 11, so in other words, the gap to getting to that 2023 is getting larger and that is what's concerning to me.
Yeah, and, and, and it is concerning, of course it is concerning, but also we have, I think, I think we also have to look at the growth, right? So we may not reach the goal, but if, if we're in the right direction, I know it's, we are, we're, we're meant to get that goal, but those also goals were, I mean, we wanna be at 90 percent by 2023, right? So, I mean, some of the programs we talked about, like the pre-K four and pre-K three, we're not gonna see the benefit of the, of those things until like year, two, three years down the road.
I understand, that's why, that's why my, one of my questions was whether was the, whether the bilingual model, if it was optional or is it a district initiative? According to what y'all are telling me, it's optional and that's concerning to me, cause that's telling me that the bilingual director is spending an enormous amount of training, our staff, on bilingual, but yet campuses are choosing to opt out whenever they want to. How is that affecting our students that were in a bilingual and now boom, we're removing it and now you're going all English? What effect is that having on the students?
Those campuses, can I answer that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Those five campuses, they are bilingual, bilingual campus. We are not moving any campus out of the bi, five, five campus, they were started with a bilingual, they are still bilingual campus.
So then how come on the notes yourself is optional?
It is optional, let me answer, I'm sorry. It's optional because no one forced them to sign up. Those five campuses chose option, like they chose to sign up. That was, that's why, that's why we're saying it was optional and, and those five campuses selected the principal, some of them are gone now, some of the principal are the one who said, I wanna be part of it. We didn't force it on anybody, that's why it's optional, Dr. Valdez. It was, it wasn't, as far as I know, it started before I got here, but as far as I understood is.
And nine campuses chose to be a bilingual campus.
Yeah, I didn't, we, and we didn't ask them to do or add more, or hey, you gotta do this, so it was always options since the beginning.
Well, if the trend repeats like last year, currently where we are, our target is supposed to be, the target was 70 in 2019, but the actual was 65. If this trend continues, the predict, the projected actual is predicted to be at 64 percent at the end of this year. So we're, we're getting further and further away and I guess, I guess maybe my concern is right now, I think it's still plenty of time.
Yeah.
For us to do whatever we need to do to make sure and especially Ms. Dr. Seves, cause she's the one that's at the campuses, of what it is she's gonna do to make sure that changes are made, because we can, I read some of the things that y'all said and all of that is perfect, but I'm gonna tell you what I think is missing, that we're saying we're monitoring, that we're running reports, that we're doing this and we're doing that, but where is the actual, let me check, to make sure it was done? That's the part that's missing and that's why we see our scores in that.
And we are doing two things, like meeting with the principal at campus and also they are making the presentation of the, of the progress. We, and they come and make a presentation and then look at their score, their trackers and all those things, we, we are monitoring.
Yeah, but then what are they doing with all that? Yeah, they can monitor it, they can look at it, they can review it, but what actions are being taken and what are y'all doing to make sure that those actions were indeed implemented? Because Mr. Rana, the data's telling us something very different and I, I just wanna make sure that we make the necessary changes, because if we don't get our students reading on level, we're already putting them at a disadvantage for the rest of the high school, well, the rest of the.
I, I agree, I, I know, I know we have, we have, we have, I'm sorry, Dr. Valdez, we have, we have a literacy issue here in our district and this is nothing new. I mean, if you look at our start, I mean, for years, we've been always behind, behind the state, for years, I mean, you can go back two, three, five, I don't know how many years, it's always been behind and that's one of the reasons for the first time in the, as far as I know, right, that we are developing a literacy plan. The team here and a lot of our, uh, uh, school personnel have been involved in creating literacy, a literacy plan that I don't even think, you've been here longer than I am, did we ever had a literacy plan here?
We, we are developing a literacy plan, it's in the final stages, that will dictate a lot of, and resolve and answer a lot of literacy gaps we have in our, in our system and the literacy plan will tell you exactly what we need to happen in grade, in the first, second grade, what should be the due time, all the components are being addressed in the, in the literacy plan. In our next board meeting, that will be, and will highlight our district literacy plan we are going to present to you.
And I'm just saying, because we've got one school, AP Solis, that school is doing phenomenal, because they have procedures in place, accountability, monitoring, interventions, they have the perfect recipe for a successful school. If that school is being successful, then so should the rest of them, we're doing the things that we need to, to be successful in school.
Yes, no, absolutely, we, we want our students to be successful.
Because they have students, they have left students too, they have every students too, they have the same population, they're being very successful.
I, I think, Dr. Valdez, I don't, I, you're bringing a good point, I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you. I think also, we have so many things going on, like we have a lot, for example, we did a lot of change, changes in leadership, you know what I mean, like we have a lot of new principals in elementary, some of them, we're working with them, so it's, it's a lot of things we're doing, there is not one, one thing and, and Mr. Rodriguez and her team are doing a phenomenal job, but also Mr. Rodriguez has been there for many years and she's a very experienced and talented. We want every principal to be like that, we want every staff member to be like staff member at Solis, but it doesn't happen overnight, that takes a village, all of us coming together to help make sure that every campus in Dona I S D is like Solis. That's, that, I mean, that's ultimately the goal, absolutely. That's, I mean, that's ultimately the goal, absolutely. We want every campus to look like that.
Correct, and you can change personnel, that's going to happen, you're going to lose people, but what I'm, the point that I'm trying to make is, even if personnel is being changed, if your procedures, your expectations, your communication, your follow-through, your accountability is the same, then a new person comes in, and they have to fly with that, with that, those procedures that are already established.
Yeah.
So, they should be able to transition into that position smoothly, and I'm not sure that that is fully established from the top going down. I mean, that's just my observations based on looking at the board, but that's why I don't have any other questions.
Sure.
I mean, what I hear Dr. Valdez raising is, are we doing enough different, even from last year, to land us in a different place? In this board, we want y'all to be bold, we want you to be fierce, in the changes that have to be made, to like, so that we can actually see the increase.
Right.
Because what, that's what I hear you say, Dr. Valdez, is that, you know, we see, may see some incremental growth, but is it enough different? Is it bold enough changes? And we know you all have been making changes. We want you to know, be bold in the changes, because we're in, we're in with you all, and are the changes bold enough for us to get, to make up the difference, to us to get to seventy or eighty percent? Is, am I...
That is you here, running the money.
Okay.
Well, with those approaches, there's one thing that I want to just, as Dr. Valdez is talking about, the quantitative data, I like to look at it from a qualitative perspective, which means, what, I mean, are we tied to one, one area, for example, IStation? Is IStation the only tool that we have available in our district? And I asked that question last time when we met on the twentieth of October, and you said, your response was, was TA approved? Well, okay, just because TA approves something does not mean it's valid for every district. There's tools outside in our marketplace that are much better than IStation. As a matter of fact, I know that TA has done some research themselves, that IStation has some value, and has not had the success it thought it did.
Right.
And because of those things, and the reason I share that with you guys is, and the boldness that Ms. Rana is talking about, is are there other systems that, that you, I mean, I'm just talking about our principals, our teachers, that have used and applied in the past, that can bring to the table, to bear, and have those increases that we're talking about? Yeah, I mean, is it, is it a problem that we have in our district in reading? Well, you know, we can go back years, when I was coming to high school, that we had problems back then, absolutely, you know?
They had no data back then.
But, yeah, but we had success, I mean, we had success. How we had success, I don't know. But the data was not being...
We have report clerks.
But, I mean, we didn't have all those IStations. We didn't have all these nifty tools to tell us the process, the progress that students are making, right? So, now, because of those data, what is it that we want to measure effectively with the tools that we don't have current? If IStation is not a tool for you, then let's, let's be bold, let's do something different. Just because we have IStation, we feel comfortable with it, well, maybe it's not the tool for Donna, you know what I mean?
Yes, to answer your question, sir, we are piloting a couple of programs, so that we can see, the first program, we are piloting for elementary, two elementary schools, we are reading, imagined reading, just like we are imagined math, we are piloting two campuses, twenty elementary and five elementary, imagined learning. So, that's what we are going to pilot for two years, or four, or fifteen years, to explore most, more possibilities, and see that kind of results. That's one program we are piloting in two campuses. We are also piloting mind play and other, other two campuses. We are going to see, look at the class at elementary, and other two, senior at elementary, and other campuses. So, we want to see how mind play is really assist, can assist us in the future. And then we are also giving at the, at the T3000s for the, for the high school, it's already, we saw some success last year, we want to keep implementing T3000s. That is, it reminds me, the third program, we want to...
It's the TA, it teaches like a champion.
Teach like a champion.
Yeah, they develop a reading curriculum, and they want to pilot...
Pilot is associated with the school. So, we are, we are going in that direction, exploring more possibility, so see which kind of best our needs.
So, as us, for us as a board, you all, we can't, this is good timing, as we move into adopting new board goals, because then we know we can expect from them, an analysis on, should we use a different assessment tool to determine reading?
Yeah.
And are we also, are we also, I know that we have IStation, I'm going to use this as an example, as a teacher, are we training our teachers as how we want them to implement IStation? And what was the other one that you mentioned?
Mind play.
Mind play, okay, because we don't want the teachers to say, because, I mean, they say, okay, our kids have to do one hour or two hours a week on IStation and mind play. Okay, so the teacher would walk over, okay, kids, we're going to the lab, okay, there you go, sit down, and you've got to do an hour. And are they being monitored? Are they being direct, are the kids being directed as to what we're expecting and what results?
The processes are, we train our games, CS and principal. We trained in the month of August, all the principal CS, and then the game, and we are open for the campuses to bring our reading language, art department, or bilingual education department, to go to the campus and provide the training for the IStation hall, but the principal are capable of doing a perfection learning.
See, and I think that's the part that's missing, Mr. Rana.
Yeah.
Not, not just for that particular example, but in general, in everything that I'm discussing.
Right.
They're getting the training, the principals, principals going in, they're checking for the implementation day in and day out.
That's right.
I think those are the parts that are missing in our district. And, and Dr. Aziz, I'll leave it at that, I'm not going to ask any questions, because I know y'all are tired, and y'all need to go home.
No, no, it's...
But I just do want to say, we are, this board completely empowers you to do whatever
Thank you, ma'am.
you have to do.
Thank you.
To make sure that those reading levels go up by the end of the year.
Thank you.
Because we owe that to our children.
Of course, no, thank you, and...
We're on record now.
Well, you know, that, it goes back to, when we go visit different schools, as I did last year, I know Manor was one of those, and reading was one of the discussions they had.
Yeah.
Well, in Manor, they went from a D within months, from a D to a B status, using a different system.
Right.
And the reason I say that, you know, mind, mind station was one, or mind game, I think was one of those. Mind play.
Mind games.
Mind game, yeah. I'll play with my own mind. So, anyway, so they, they showed, they showed, well, I was the only one that went, by the way, to that trip. And so, they gave you, they gave us a broad perspective of how their improvement, their systems, and again, it goes back to coming back to you guys, and it's, I'll take the blame for that, for not coming back and discussing what I've learned, and just put it on the table, so you guys can dissect it. Because sometimes we get that privilege, right? To go visit other schools, and where they share information that is working for them, and that's one of the things, that's why I said what I said, because Manor, I know, had its issues last year. I think now, they changed their, the board, and they're not, now their, the scores coming back down because of whatever reason. But, anyway, I just wanted to show that.
And yes, yes, thank you for sharing, sir. But yeah, we're actually going to pilot that, that program. Yep. Thank you, that's it for me.
I make the motion to approve...
Accept.
...to accept the report as presented. Motion made by Ms. Valdez, second by Dr. Barry. Mr. Olivero?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor, motion passes.
Yeah, next, we have, I think you have in your packet, a copy of a statement of impact of immersion, Inc., which is a charter school that thinking about opening up in Donna. So, if we just, we need a motion, Ms. Watts, if you don't, to, just acknowledge it.
What's your recommendation?
It's just, we have to just acknowledge.
Acknowledge it, we receive it, we don't have to do anything.
I move.
Second.
In favor.
Favor.
Motion made by Colonel Perez, second by Ms. Rina. Favor.
Favor.
In favor.
Okay, thank you, next. We will be discussing, under academic services, the presentation of the Texas Academic Performance Report, the taper for the 2018-2019 school year. Mr. Rana?
Good evening, Board. It's my honor, my pleasure. Before I even start, I want to recognize, it's a recognition, that we are so blessed, so fortunate, to have you all supporting us, unbothered, and then like outstanding directions, and then providing the support you guys are providing to us. My department, and all of us, we are very thankful, the direction you guys provide. It made me, or it made me very excited, when you ask question, really, we love it. So, I want you to know, that when you ask question, it's never a bother, it's always a privilege to, to give you the answer, the question you always give to us. And those questions give us more direction when we provide the answer. And then we put together, put our head together, so that is okay, this is what, it's like a total commitment from all of us. So, it's, it's an honor and privilege to have such an amazing board, who is giving us very good directions and support. Thank you very much. This is a taper report. These are a few of the requirements I, I, we need to do this thing. If you recall, last year, at studying at the same place, we were C district. And if we look at the, this year, we are a B district. And I promised last year, I said, just watch, we will be a B district next year, and here we are, we are a B district. So, the first slide, it shows us other accountability. The whole taper report, it does say Texas academics, a report, academics report, but it has actually three sections. The first section is, we look at the academic area, the second section, we look at the HR area, the third is a business area. So, I'm going to go through all these three areas, and we have expert in, sitting right in front of me, if I go wrong, and they can always chime in. Our 2019 accountability rating is B, we have a 2019 special education determination status, we need assistance. And on the, on the, on the right-hand side, if you look at that, the, this report, taper report, if I want to, if I can go back, accountability, there were three big reports, accountability report, taper report, and PBMAS, now we call RDA. In this taper report, they are combining all three, accountability, taper report, and then the PBMAS, now we call result-driven accountability. So, therefore, you will see the combination of these three reports. So, we see the special education need assistance, they are, if you look on the right-hand side, there's an indicator nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen. Those are the indicators, they are, they are about the students, they are in the classroom, how much the streamlining, how many students they are spending actual time with the actual teacher, not pulling them out. So, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, thirteen are more talking about the, the outside school suspension, expulsion, and more than ten days, or, or more than ten days, or less than ten days. So, these are the things, they're not more academic, but they are more managerial, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen. So, because of this thing, we need, we need assistance, which is a performance level one. If you look at here, this is a performance level one, is a need requirement, and need assistance, and then the need intervention, and need substantial intervention. So, we are at performance level one, that we need to, we need to correct nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen, which is more managerial type of thing, that we are already working on this, how we can correct those indicators. So, this report has in two fashion, the one is a PDF form, other is an online, dynamic online. So, where we, as the data available, they keep inserting online dynamic PDF, the taper report, and there is a one, just the PDF report, which is the all-public sees. And of course, from the taper report, we get the district taper report, we get, every campus got that taper report, and then from there, they need to really look at the taper report, and revise their CIP, each campus periodically make your progress toward its performance objective. There's another thing, each report tells us the accreditation of the campus. As this report says, our DIS is accredited by, accredited by Texas Education Agency. Of course, this is a year prior, you see the C there, it was our last year accountability, and then the new, as we, excuse me, as you move forward, so you will see, the next year, you'll see the B, and the, the next year accreditation, accreditation. We also need to notify to the board, that if we have any F campus in our district, and Garza Elementary is a F campus in our district, and by looking at their comprehensive score, like I just, we just took, and I know that we need to share the comprehensive data with you all, Dr. Aziz, probably going to either email the, the comprehensive data tonight or tomorrow, and we will share with you the data from the comprehensive. As I'm looking at the, the Garza Elementary, they have a, in, in some areas, they have a one-digit growth, in some areas, they have a two-digit growth. So, the Garza Elementary, though they are F campus, but because of the change, the change we were talking about, the, having the, the, the new experience principal there, and assisting all our directors, and the teachers, the students, all working very hard, and we start seeing the campuses moving toward the right direction. Are we there yet? No, we are not there yet, but you can see, when we share the data with you all, that this campus is moving forward, from going from F. Our goal is, I just met with the, with our, the PSP, though the people, we don't use to call PSP, but they are our technical support, that our vision is not going from F to the next level, D or C. Our goal is going from F to B, that's the least we are expecting. So, we are working very diligently, aggressively, all team together, to get to that level from F to B, at least B. So, this is a work in progress. Taper report also dictates that we need to share with the board, the distinction we had in our, in our district, and we have a total sixteen distinction. As you see, the AP Solis Middle School, they have the five, and Donna High, Donna North, they have two, and so and so forth. Campus performance objective, and then what, what are the objectives, so we can improve our CIP and DIP. Now, I'm going to share with you the star performance, the first area in the taper report. Just to highlight, that we have a third to tenth grade, and eleventh grade U.S. history, we have a total twenty-two assessment, that our students take third grade two, fourth grade three, and so and so forth. All right. So, now, what I'm going to present here, I'm going to present the star performance, and I'm going to go start from the bigger picture, and come to the smaller picture. So, we'll start with the all-grade ELA reading at approaches level. You could see, like, from last year to this year, we improved one percent, and if I can go, like, the first column, you see is the state, second, two bar, a region, the last two bar are Donna ISD. So, we saw like the seventy-four to seventy-five state, seventy-two to seventy-four region, and Donna ISD sixty to sixty-one. We have an increase in reading at approaches level. And then we saw the all-grade ELA reading at mid-level, we have one percent increase, and then we stayed the same in the master, in the, in the area of reading. The next is math. You see, the Donna ISD had experienced like a one percentage decrease, but it's still very comparable, where you see eighty, 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 and seventy-nine, though we experienced decline, but this is still very comparable to the state and region. And we are working very hard not to, not to experience this decline what we have experienced this year. this year. Mid level, uh, as you see, it's very comparable with the state and region, and, and math, master level, we need to, we, this is a mixed thing, we, we need to work hard, to get to the, the 30, not even 17, get to the level of 30. This is the writing, very happy to see this score, we have been seeing a lot of years, many, many years, score in writing was 50, 50, 50, 50. Finally, this year, we saw the score in 60, this is not our goal, but we start seeing, getting away from 50, to getting to the 60s now. So you see, last year, Donna ISD in, in both fourth and seventh grade was 56, now we are 63, in, in approaches, 31 in, in mids, and 10 in master level. So you could see, the, the state just increased two percentage, but Donna ISD increased 7%. So that's a big highlight for the writing, in the area of writing, whatever we are doing, we need to keep harping and keep, uh, providing professional development, start, keep providing the, the needs, and keep needing the, meeting the needs of our students. In the area of science, we saw 76, and 76, uh, last year, this year, we stayed the same, and science has three test bio, fifth grade science and eighth grade, and we saw the increase, though we were very like same, last, but in, in a mids, we went from 40 to 43%, very comparable with the state and region, and then move in the master, from 13 to 14%. If we look at the social study, you look at the, again, very comparable, as I, as I show, showed you in the area of math, like a very, like a 78, but here, not only, only we have the, the comparable, look at the state is 78, sorry, 81, 78, Donna was 80, but 81 and 80, we are still very comparable at the top, neck to neck with the region and state. And in the area of, the mids, we experienced some decline, and we, and the decline is because of the, mainly, mainly the eighth grade social studies score, not the U.S. history, it's mainly the eighth grade social study, and there was a, some personnel issue, the, all those things, so we are, we don't have those, the barrier anymore, so we have full fledged teacher, teaching the social study. And then we look at the master, 25, 30, uh, 25 to 23, and we will not repeat this backward thinking, God willing, next year. This is all grade, all subject, we look at the, the approaches, we moved all grade, all subject, one person, and we stayed the same in mids, and stayed the same in master level. So this is a overall presenting, this thing. If you would like to me talk to any certain grade level, I can do, but this is the overall, so because, if this is a, this is a long presentation, I don't wanna go slide by slide, so I just showed you the, the all, if there any question, I can entertain or any, any grade level you would like to see. School progress, so we moving on to school progress, this is a domain two, is school progress, and then if we look at the domain two, school progress, first, the three bars are state, the next three bar, region one, and Donna ISD. We, we look at the all grade, both subjects, 64, and then the all grade ELA reading, 64, and both all math, 65. If we look at the state, they are in 60s and we were in 60s, it's not like we are very different than the state, I'm not making excuse, but it's like a very comparable data, as we compare to the state or the region. So this is our school progress. Any question? This is the star performance data, and any question, I, in your package, I, I inserted the, the answer of those question was the...
Thank you.
Yes. So I, I, I can entertain any question, anytime you guys want. Then moving on to the number five, attendance and graduation dropout rate, this is a something we need, this is a continuous effort, dropout rate, and then the graduation rate. Our goal is, of course, of graduating our students within four year, we don't wanna go five year or six year. Our goal is graduating our students in four year. The first is the annual dropout rate, how do they calculate, this is the formula is given to you, the student, they are dropout seventh and eighth grade divided by total students, this, they are in seventh and eighth grade, and the number you get is a dropout rate. And this is a dropout rate from a district seven to eighth grade, we actually, we met today, from eight to 12:30, in a CNA training room, and we are putting the, the CNA together, comprehensive need assessment. And just wanna highlight, comprehensive need assessment was never done the fashion, the way we are putting the CNA together this year. And that's what Dr. Isa was mentioning here, there are a lot of things are happening, they were not in place before. The CNA, the process was there, but now we are looking, today, we just spent all day, just looking at the data. Directors knew the, knew the data, but we still went over all the data, we went over several reports, we started with the, the accountability report, we look at the RDA report, we look at the star score, look all the reports, we understood the data, now is the next step, we have a 14, and then we are going, each team is going to develop their area. So this is a something, that is also, will help us in our strategic plan, the district Donna ISD strategic plan, and this is the CNA will help us in that area too. You see, grade seven to eighth grade, we, we, this is what we need to see, we need to see, the dropout rate is declining. But we did not see this thing in the, the high school nine to 12th grade, our dropout rate increased, and then we need to put some studies together, that we can work on the dropout rate, we don't want students, they come to Donna ISD and they drop. Talking to my team, that we have only, only 15 students, it never happened before, that they drop out. So the data, but again, this data is not, last is 17, 18 data, what I'm presenting today. So you will see, the, this effort, maybe in a, in a year and two years, all those efforts are happening right now. Graduation rate, as I mentioned, our goal is the four year, like, four year graduation, Donna ISD is 87.3, and this, and the state is 90. And the, our five year is higher than our four year, but our goal is not going five year, our goal is four year, which is, that's what federal government see, four year. The students coming, freshmen, they go senior, they graduate, there is no five year graduation, and but we have a five year, six year. And the state take the what of the best, so, uh, uh, the five year was best, but state or federal only look at the four year. So this was our graduation, graduation rate and dropout rate, now we looking at CCMR, I have been presenting CCMR data, there, that's where we are, the CCMR, the first is a state, the second is, second, three columns are region, and Donna ISD, if you look at the state, 65.5, Donna ISD is 62.5, very comparable. And we look at the, the, the college ready, 50, and then 50, 35.7, now we are going to have early college, this is going to assist us, to lift this score up, when we are going to see our students are college ready, they are ready to take the TSI, ACT, SAT, AP classes, dual classes, so that number will go up, as we are opening early college. And then the, the, the green column is our, uh, the career and military ready, we see the state is 28.7, Donna is 44.8.
Yeah, that one was stood out, that was phenomenal.
And then we are doing the CTE certificate, all the industrial certification, all those things, the data, the next year, you will see, there are a lot of industrial certification we are graduating, making our students, but this data is only the senior data. So we are working with the junior and freshman and sophomore, but they will not give, they will not show on the data until they are senior, the senior. High school graduation, graduate enrollment, the student, they are enrolled in university or two year college, and their GPA, that's what the, this slide is showing, and this is our goal, three, on our AA local. District student information, class size, as you could see, we are very compared with the state, our class size in elementary, they're very comparable to the state, we don't have any red flag there, we can see, oh, our class size are high, and thank you very much, for keeping this class size low, for our teacher and for our students, so we can reach one to one basis. Class size for, for secondary, we just saw one area for language, it's like a Spanish one, Spanish two, that, that's higher, other than that, we are very comparable, and again, thank you very much, for allowing us to keep the class sizes in, in a very good way. Staff information, this is more HR area now, that, like, uh, this is a, like, a staff information, professional staff, teacher, professional sports, campus administration, central administration, educational aid, and auxiliary staff. And you can see, we are, the, the orange bar is Donna, yellow bar is state, you could see, in each area, we, the both professional and teacher, we are below state, and professional sport, a little bit difference, campus administration below, central office below, educational aid, very competitive, auxiliary, we have a little bit higher staff ratio than the, the state. Teacher information, this is our beginning teacher, one through five year experienced teacher, and we have more one through five year experienced teacher. And we want our teacher, come with us, they get the training from us, stay with us, and benefit our teacher. And that's where we need to really, in conjunction with the HR, we need to develop some strategies, where we can retain our teacher. On the left hand side of the slide, you see, our more teachers are bachelors, and the state has more teacher in what, in master, and we also need to develop strategies, where we can recruit master teachers, and retain them in our Donna ISD. This is a average year of experience of campus leadership, and you could see, we, our principal, our leadership, they are with us, as you could state, average low, but Donna ISD is higher. Salaries, beginning teacher, we are very competitive, but as we go to the one through five year, six to 10 year, which tend to start lowering than the state, that's more HR thing, so we need to develop some strategies, where we can, remember the first slide was one through five year, the teacher, they, they are, we are, we have higher, we need to work on retaining those teacher, providing them competitive salary in the, in the more years. Actual salaries, teachers, like a 54 state and 50, this is slide for you, you ask me question, if you have any question, central office, all the pay you have a compare, Donna ISD and state. Instruction staff, and we, we are very competitive with the state also. Turnover rate, state is higher than Donna ISD, we need to keep working on this one, but we need to retain our experienced teacher. Financial report, this is for more business area, and in this area, the first, these tables, they are all the table, and then the, the next table, that, the table you see first, they are the drive from those tables. So the first is the operational revenue source, and then the second slide is our expenditure. Then you see expenditure by program, and then you see local tax collection. And then the all funds revenue, all funds total expenditure, and this is our fund balance, and I, we misconstrue myself, we met, there is a gap, you see 16, 17, there is no bar, because the financial report was not given, or it was not available, so you see the ear of that gap. This is a general fund, unassigned funds balance, and this is a student's history, that we have a expenditure per student, so we are large student 10 year study. A report on violent incident, that, that's a major violent, and we report to DEA, there is no incident that, that is like a, truly in that area, that we need to report. Is there any question? I went through a little bit faster, because I have given you the slides and all those things, so if they have any question, I can entertain, this is very long, required presentation. I tried to, to give you the, the glimpse and the highlight, as best as I could. Is there any question I can entertain?
I sent you my questions.
No, we're good.
I make the motion to, there's no question?
That's the report.
We don't need to approve this one?
Yeah, this is the report.
Thank you, sir, thank you very much, Mr. Vanna.
Thank you.
Next, very good. Next on the consent agenda, Board members, is there any discussion or clarification on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made, Madam, this is the real, second by Dr. Valdez. Dr. Mary?
Favor.
Mr. Gavero?
Favor.
Favor.
In favor.
In favor, motion passes. Next, we have the governance part, and the first one is conservative month report for November.
Good evening, Madam President, Members of the Board, Superintendent Asayes, tonight, I'm reporting on the month of November, and the first section is your financial accountability. The only area there that we've got slightly off track, is your centralized purchasing, we still need to hire a buyer, I understand you had openings, and I believe 10 people applied, but none of them had much experience, so I think that position's gonna be reposted again, to look for somebody with experience, so that we don't have any learning on the job, I heard that loud and clear last time. Then, one of the areas, you, you did really well, this past year, in adding dollars to your fund balance, and I looked at your strategic plan, you've added those dollar amounts into your strategic plan, but one of the things that I need for you to start concentrating on, and I've put it under the business section, or financial accountability, which is your health insurance, I know it doesn't fall in there, but because it has to deal with money, I put it in there. But you do need to start getting reports on that, I don't know how well you're doing on your health plan, and we need to get a handle on it sooner, because every year, we're discussing health insurance in July and August, and I haven't seen any reports come through, I don't know how that health plan, you wanna elaborate?
I just wanted to say that I met today with Lou Arias, who's our consultant from Gallagher, and the plan is to start presenting in February, the reason why he didn't do it, because our plan started in October, and he wanted to wait at least to have a couple months worth of material, I guess, or data, so he can gather that, analyze that, and then share with our Board members, but I met with him just today, and he's coming for the next Board meeting, to share with our Board members, the status on that.
Well, that would be great, also, somehow, that committee needs to come together sooner, because work does need to start going on that, too much money is being funneled through that plan, that's one of those areas. The governance area, you're pretty much on track, as far as governance is concerned, I had you off, slightly off track on the strategic plan, and the superintendent did share with me, and the reason I had it off, is because dollar amounts hadn't been put to the fiscal year. You have done that, so in the next report, which will be January, that will come off, you should be on track, you've put dollar amounts to it, and I realize, you were waiting for the end of the year audit, to know how much money is available, to put into that. So that's being done, and then the only other thing that I would mention, is that it's still happening, staff is coming to Board members, and they are, I need for you to redirect the staff, and tell them to go directly to their supervisors, and to the superintendent, instead of trying to take care of the situation for them, as far as the governance is concerned. I'm dealing with Mr. Rana, on the five campuses, and I get reports from him, but he is complying, and they are complying with the progress reports that have to be sent into DEA, so I am overseeing all of that, he stays pretty much on top of that, so, that he's doing a really good job on that. Everything else looks fine. Any questions?
Yeah, there, there's only one thing that we, that we missed, and we discussed this on Friday.
The tracking.
Right, the tracking piece for, for our two-way communication advocacy... The tracking piece for our two-way communication advocacy program that we started in November. That we did not put in our numbers. That was one item that we missed.
Yes, we'll be discussing that one on the next.
Right. So we'll make this up, I guess, for the next session.
Right. I don't think we had it for this report.
No, we did not. We should have, but we didn't.
So we'll catch up.
It's next items.
But you're above the fifty percent. So you're done, you're doing well.
Thank you.
Sure.
Next, Lone Star Governance Board Tracking Report, December twenty-nineteen, Colonel Perez.
Yeah, that was something that we met, Ms. Ramones and I met Friday along with Superintendent to discuss, was a little small issue, and one of the numbers, the way it was calculated, we figured it out, I guess, together, and really, nothing really changed. We stayed at seventy-one percent, average for the last quarter. November, we're low down, but nonetheless, overall, we still at seventy-one percent. So we did really well as a board focusing on students. So we're doing extremely well, as she just did with you. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Colonel Perez.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I jump in on something with that real quick?
Sure.
T E A has gone through some revisions of the time-tracking analysis, and they are now awarding credit, I guess you would call it, to areas that typically refer to how you implement Lone Star Governance that are not necessarily student outcome goal-related. So, for example, time spent discussing your board self-evaluation now will count into your proposed minutes. And I have a new time tracker sheet for you. And so you and I will do together and go over that, and we will start using that this month.
Well, it goes back to the advocacy as well. I mean, Dr. Ramones, Ms. Ramones, myself, and Superintendent discussed this, now that you're talking about that, is how is that going to count? Right now, the way it's being structured, it counts against us for having a two-way communication with our community. And that was one of the reasons that we didn't really use it. We did, but we didn't. So it goes back to, you know, if we're going to have a two-way communication with our community and doing our advocacy piece, as per the time tracker, then how is that going to be done? It's not, doesn't show anywhere where that counts for us, it counts against us, as it currently stands.
They've made some changes. You'll see in the time tracker, you'll still see time spent focusing on student outcome goals.
Right.
Student outcome goals, but you'll also see another line item, time spent implementing Lone Star Governance practices. And you will also be getting very soon a revised Lone Star Governance manual that looks very, very different from what you have been used to be seeing.
Okay.
You and I will go over that together, and we'll start calculating that.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colonel Perez. Next, we have the executive session. The time is eight forty-seven. Executive session is authorized with the Texas Government Code Sections five-five-one point zero-seven-one, five-five-one point zero-seven-two, five-five-one point zero-seven-three, five-five-one zero-seven-four, five-five-one point zero-seven, five-five-one point zero-seven-six, five-five-one point zero-eight-two, five-five-one point zero-eight-three, and five-five-one point zero-eight-four. We'll be going into executive session. Nine twenty-five, we're back to open session, to take possible action on matters discussed in executive session. A, discussion on possible action to approve Superintendent's recommendation of personnel, approval of recommendation for professionals to include hiring termination recommendations. Is there a motion? Make the motion? Motion made by Dr. Valdez.
Second.
Second by Mr. De Rado Real. Dr. Mary?
Favor.
In favor.
Favor.
Yes?
In favor, motion passes. Number two, discussion, B, discussion on possible action, I mean, discussion on possible action to approve pending or complicated litigation settlement matters and/or matters where the professional, they, under state board, requires private consultation with a school attorney, no action. Need to adjourn?
Make the motion to adjourn.
Second. Favor. May by Mr. De Rado Real, second by Dr. Valdez. Dr. Mary?
Favor.
In favor.
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 In favor, motion passes. Meeting adjourned.
Agains.